I just want to be sure he was here.
And fair, Friday will please rise for the presentation of the colors. Remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Will Brazington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. A few remarks with our invocation to follow and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Just two days ago, our country reflected on the 20-year anniversary of one of the most tragic and pivotal days in our nation's history. The events of September 11th changed each of our lives and indeed served to shape the course of our nation's future as well as that of the world. Countless heroes in the form of first responders as well as regular citizens revealed themselves to us over the course of that horrific morning, and thousands lost their lives in the senseless acts that day. While they are gone, they will never be forgotten. I heard it said this past Saturday that one of the best ways for all of us to memorialize the bravery and sacrifices made on September 11th is to live our lives the way we did on September 12th, 2001. United, resolved, patriotic, all standing together for our country. We felt it important that we pay tribute to the significance of this occasion here in Greenville today. May we all pause and offer a moment of silence in remembrance of those who perished in New York, Washington DC, and Pennsylvania 20 years ago. Dear Lord, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well all those who have given us this important task of serving the public good. May our efforts be blessed within sight and guided by understanding and wisdom as we seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. And we ask for your continued guidance as we carry on in our collective work, and we offer thanks for the many blessings that you have afforded us. It's in your name we lift this prayer. Amen. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our God. Praise. God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, equal, liberty, justice for all.
Return the colors.
You may proceed. Thank you so much, girl. Those beautiful words, Bill. We appreciate all of you coming here tonight. We're going to have a roll call and then approval of our minutes, and then we have some guests to speak.
Councilmember John Deворke. Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brazington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Here. Okay. Our minutes of August the 23rd. Are there any corrections or changes? Corrections? If not, the minutes will stand approved as submitted. Now, we have two people who have signed up to speak directly to council. All right, we have Allen Effrig from the Metropolitan Arts Council.
I'm amazed at how similarly you walked up to the podium as the color guard did.
I'm sorry. It's okay if I take this off, right? Great. Thank you for being, letting me be here this evening. I just wanted to come and give a brief update on how things are at the Metropolitan Arts Council. Got some great news to announce. As of August 31st, our endowment passed the $2 million mark, and total assets surpassed $3 million. So, which is great. Which is great. Thank you. Thank you. You have two handouts, our 2020 annual report, which will give you an overview of everything that happened in the arts that is awesome despite the challenges brought on by the pandemic. We were able to do a lot even with open studios, our grants. Since the pandemic, we have given out $668,950 in COVID relief funds to 33 arts organizations in Greenville County, which is awesome. Those funds were provided by three withdrawals from our endowment and then matched by the Graham Foundation, Hollingsworth Funds, Canal Charitable Foundation, and the Community Foundation. So, we will be gauging what losses are this year and possibly giving more relief funding out in the fourth quarter of this calendar year. The other document that you have, both a bound copy of, and then I think it was distributed via email, is a financial performance of the Metropolitan Arts Council for the last 15 years, 2006 to 2020. And just to give you a few of the numbers of how the arts have grown in Greenville since then. Our assets are up 1,343%. Income is up 216%. The grants we've given out have grown by 512%. Our number of donors is up 244%. And the number of prospects in our database is up 715%. And this is all something that everyone in the community can be proud of because if it weren't for people in the public responding to what we're trying to do, all the hard work and all the passion and all the creative creativity and intelligence and everything we try to embody at MAC wouldn't be worth very much without the public response. And I also have to thank profusely the city for its incredible support of MAC and the arts, not only during the pandemic but in every other year, through city accommodations tax. Another department I cannot say enough about is the Department of Budget, particularly Matt Efferd, Christina Junker, and my dear friend Karen Osborne, who are great to work with in getting those ATAX requests processed quickly and very efficiently. So, thank you for your time, and if there are any questions or you have any comments or anything you'd like to share, you know where I can be reached. Thanks.
Thank you so much. This is excellent information. And hopefully, if anybody in the community would like copies of these, that we keep some down in the lobby. Very good information. Wonderful art. Okay, we have Ms. Mary Duckett.
Good afternoon. Okay. I see a lot of new faces with the city and even city council people that haven't seen me in over a year and a half while I'm back because I'm displeased about some things that's going on. I know with COVID, a lot of things got shoved under the radar that we as neighborhood peoples were not able to address. I don't understand the management aspect of the city anymore. One of the things that really ticked me off was the way you changed the format of Greenville Cares. I mean, that's just one of the things. What I want you to know is we're going to be addressing a lot of issues that we see in our neighborhood. I'm speaking of the special emphasis neighborhood. See, gentrification has already taken over, but there's another undercover aspect that I see. I see an aspect of some type of plan to remove some of our side of the neighborhood. Because one of the things that I noticed that is happening, if it's someone that's living in our neighborhood that's in the upfront status, all they gotta do is call City Hall, and I have no idea who they talk to, and they get things done. We have been waiting on so many things in our neighborhoods for so many years, and yet only a few of them have come to fruition. So, we're interested in who's managing the city. Maybe 15 years ago, some of you all, as a matter of fact, Ms. Fleming was the only one that was on city council. When I said, "Are you trying to make Greenville a gated community?" Well, I answered, "No, Ms. Duncan, we would never do that." I saw the special that was on WYFF the other night. That's what it displayed, was that this is a gated That's what it displayed was that this is a gated community. Well, I'm here to tell you that we as a group are going to be addressing some issues in a form of a letter and we're gonna send it to the mayor, city council, city manager, all the department heads. We're gonna send it to everyone because I have a feeling that something is being macro managed. And some of you all are not getting some of the information that's being approved. So, we wanna make you all aware of it. Have a good day and thank you and you will hear from me again.
So much, Ms. Duckett. And I forgot that your address is 1, 201 Pinney Street in Greenville.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions for Ms. Duckett? Okay, Norman. She said, she says that she's gonna send stuff. Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. Any other communications? We don't have any public hearing, so we have appointments to boards and commissions. We don't have any of those either. Now, is there a motion to accept our consent agenda, second and final reading?
So moved.
So moved and properly, second, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. We go to item number. Okay, to our regular agenda unfinished business, second and final reading.
Item 14A, an ordinance to enter into a developer's agreement between Merrill Gardens at Greenville LLC and the City of Greenville for public improvements.
Move for final passage, second.
Okay, it's been moved for second. Clint is here in case there are some questions.
What happened, Clint?
There was a council, this is, we had to make a slight adjustment in total cost. This was in the presentation that we gave at the last meeting, but the ordinance had not been adopted or updated to reflect the addition that we added at the last minute. It was to cover some utility relocation costs that were determined pretty late in the game. So, it was in the presentation, this ordinance here has been updated.
Okay.
Move for final passage as amended?
Second.
Right. It's been moved as final passage as amended. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Item 14A passes. Item 15A, first reading.
An ordinance to give a city property located at 600 Pendleton Street to United Ministries for the purpose of continuing services to the homeless.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Okay. Rebecca is here, if y'all have questions. Anybody would like an update or just move forward? Okay, they didn't say anything, Rebecca, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's been moved and approved, so clerk will call the roll for item 15A.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye. Rebecca, everybody knows about 600 Pendleton Street. How long has it been there? So, that's the reason why they weren't going through any change, they were decided. Okay, item 15B.
An ordinance to appropriate $30,200 in the miscellaneous grant fund for the FY 2020 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program.
Okay, is there a motion? Is that moved? Is it second?
Second.
All right, any explanations, question? Then y'all let him say something, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim, council. I'm happy to announce to receive this grant through FEMA. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Sarah Cook, our grant coordinator with the city in OMB, that helped us get this grant. This grant allows us to buy additional equipment for the fire department, some battery operated equipment, two additional rams used for extrication purposes to put on additional equipment, some saws, battery operated saws in addition to our gas operated saws we use in different environments that we currently can't, and some air monitoring equipment for our fire prevention officers when they're investigating fire scenes to do air quality.
Excellent, wonderful. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have questions, but I'll give you a kudos again for your, for your, your whole group hosting the event on 9/11 at Florfield. It was a, just incredible, very moving, and I just can't tell you how, how much it warmed my heart to see us leading on that among all the firefighting communities. Well done.
Thank you, and I personally do a great job with that, yes, ma'am.
Yes, that was wonderful. And we're proud of this grant. All right, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye, thank you so much. All right, for item 16A, new business resolution, first final reading.
A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Greenville and United Community Bank for the design and construction of public improvements on Falls Street, East Camperdown Way, and Church Street access ramp.
Okay, do we have, okay, Shannon, go ahead and give us update.
I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
Is there a motion to receive this?
So moved, second.
Okay, we'll second it.
Good evening, Mayor and council, our Pro Tim Fleming and council. I'm happy to go through my presentation if you'd like me to quickly, or I can answer questions, whichever is the will of the body.
How many slides?
Seven.
I just have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this is a commitment of the city to enter in this partnership.
Correct.
To do this, these public improvements. Again, on that promise from the work session discussion of jobs coming to Greenville, investment in Greenville.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it is sort of a leap of faith, for lack of anything better, and I believe out of this we have a commitment of 250 new jobs and.
Right over 200 and 100 relocated from the Blairsville, Georgia.
They move up to that page, please, so others will see.
Okay. Okay, it might be on the next slide, we're, well, maybe.
It was on the second one.
Okay.
But it's approximately 100 will be relocated from Blairsville and approximately 200 will be created.
And all of those, or maybe a portion of those are above the area median income. These are high paying jobs or higher, maybe this is a Merle question.
Yeah, I would defer to Merle on that question. I would say, though, that the, the jobs, that's all part of the incentives that were developed with the South Carolina Department of Revenue after a portion of a process that starts with the South Carolina Department of Commerce, and they received certain incentives. And those incentives would be clawback, or there's a clawback provision if they don't meet those. And so, those jobs are held through things that go with the state through economic development. So, there are many, I guess, safeguards in place to make sure that the jobs are there or certain clawback provisions would apply to them that are way beyond the development agreement with the city.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's, that's the answer I'm looking for. And Shannon, I'm gonna need you still up here. So, I guess what I'm getting is some assurance that if the promise of the company is not met, there are provisions to where there's, there's compensation to the city. Is that fair to say?
Yes, ma'am, and I would add that to two things. So, to the, to the, to the jobs themselves, this is a program that they're entering in with Department of Commerce and Department of Revenue, and in that, they don't get the money until they create the jobs. And so, the incentive, they, they can't get the incentive until they created the jobs.
That's number one.
And then, number two, as it relates to the capital investment, same thing happens, right? So, with the Greenville Area Development Corporation in Greenville County, through their assessor's office as well as the Department of Revenue, they aggregate all the potential property tax revenue as well as the amount of capital investments said done, and they do not get that incentive unless they meet those requirements as well through GADC. And GADC in the county will administer and make sure that that all gets done properly.
Okay.
Okay.
We do get notification of that via email from GADC.
And how, how can we get the people in this community to know that these jobs are available?
So that's.
I guess they will do that.
That's a combination of UCB's already started putting those out, but also through ReadySC. And so, that, they have been in conversation with our state as well as the employment office and the likes of all that.
Okay.
Then the next question doesn't have to do with you, Merle, thank you for that. You know, I still haven't seen views from the river of this property. It's very exciting, you might have them, but my question is around impact on trees in this area and how our tree ordinance plays into all this.
Yes, so actually, we do, Michael, if you could go to the next slide, there you go.
Now, that, what a coincidence, there it is, okay.
Actually, during our last meeting, you had asked about the views from, from the river. And so, we actually have two, if you'll go to the next one. So, these were created in order to address that question, and this shows how it will be impacted, the river views. Also, the applicants met with several groups, including the Carolina Garden Club, Friends of the Reedy, Trees Upstate throughout this process to ensure that they were trying to be as, you know, environmentally appropriate to the site as they could be. No trees will be touched off-site. On-site, they have had an arborist, and they're working with an arborist that suggested from Trees Upstate to come and analyze each tree on-site prior to submitting their plans to the city. Any trees that are removed, they will have to meet our current tree ordinance on that replacement.
Okay.
Same.
It's as if y'all already thought about this. Very good, thanks.
I'm sure the garden club had, gave them some ideas about where to put a nice.
Yes, and they're working with them on some, some tree planting replacements or plant planting replacements in terms of making sure that they use native species and things of that nature.
Okay.
So, the other question that Councilmember Stahl had when we were here last was about the parking. There's 154 parking spaces on-site inside the tower. The tower's a seven-story tall building. The first three stories are structured parking, and then about 100,000 square foot of commercial office space above.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? All right, all those in favor of this particular item, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, so, that item passes, we go to the next report, staff report from the Police Department Neighborhood Engagement Team, Police Chief Howard Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and council. I'm excited to be able to present to you a project we've been working on at the Police Department for a while, and we finally have reached a point where we're ready to present it to you and start this, this program. It's gonna be, we believe, well-received by our communities. We've been listening to our communities and to you, our council members, about the service you'd like to see your police department provide and the service that they would like for us to provide with them. And so, we've come up with the Neighborhood Engagement Team, and this is a pilot program we're gonna start. The Neighborhood Engagement Team is a form of community policing, but this is more than just policing a community. This is engaging a community, this is working with a community to build that community, to work with the community members, the business members, clergy, our churches, we can't forget them. They wanna be involved, we've already started meeting with them. So, this is about engaging the whole community and taking a more holistic approach to helping secure our communities and keeping them safe and work with them. In doing this, this is going to build trust and transparency in the Police Department with the community, and we think this is exactly what they want. In speaking with our community members, much like speaking with Mary Duckett, this is what she, she wants, and she is very much in favor of this, like our other community leaders of this, this program. Next slide. So, well, let me point out in the picture, so the picture you see there, that's Zuri Gerbert. She's gonna be one of our net team officers, and she will be over actually in Ms. Duckett's area, Southern Side Hampton Pinney area, and this is at a gardening project we did with some kids, one of the community gardens that she worked on and helped with, but she's already very much engaged in that community and is excited about getting going. But we're going to accomplish this mission with the net team by really improving our communications with our communities. We're doing a lot in the community, the Police Department is, but this is really going to improve the, the communication flow back and forth between the Police Department and our neighborhoods we serve. We're gonna educate the public on our values, our policies and practices. Sometimes what people need to, they need to know what we, what we're capable of doing, and this is going to certainly help with that. We're gonna build relationships with community leaders and organizations, and like I said, this includes our churches and businesses in those same areas that are in these neighborhoods. And we're gonna keep the public stakeholders and employee, employees informed regarding our outreach efforts so that we keep everyone on the same team, even if they're not on the Neighborhood Engagement Team. We want everyone in the Police Department to, to see the work too, and they're gonna be involved in it. On the picture you'll see where we were doing a neighborhood talk, Rachel Hall is going to, she's our community outreach officer. She will continue in that position, and she coordinates all of our special events we do at the Police Department with our community, whether it's fill a truck with food, or take up coats, or blankets, or help with the Humane Society to bring in food for the animals. She coordinates all those events, the polar plunge, anything officers do to help Special Olympics, the cops on a coop that you've seen at Chick-fil-A, or on top of the donut shop we did with Krispy Kreme. She's the person that coordinates all of those events that we do, and she will be part of this team. We will partner with community groups to address public safety issues, and one of the main things you will see is these net officers will be more of a community coordinator. If a neighborhood needs something that the officer, the net officer can't provide, they are gonna know the exact person inside the agency, whether it's traffic, maybe it's a speeding issue in a neighborhood, maybe it's a drug issue, and they need to get in our crime response team to take a look at a certain house that's causing a neighborhood problem. They're gonna know exactly who to reach out to and coordinate our police response, Police Department response to a neighborhood issue and get it solved quick. This is gonna be led by Sergeant Jessica McLaughlin-Lee Pack. She's a newer sergeant, she's very eager and, and, you know, she applied for this, wanted to do it, and is just a, she's a good person and she's gonna do a great job, but she will be our sergeant. They report under Lieutenant Jason Semenak, that's for reporting issues, and under Captain Long, and still an operations group because they will be part of the Uniform Patrol Team and counting on Uniform Patrol officers too to help them in their communities. And then, we will have six net team officers. We're starting with four right now. In fact, they started today, we had a meeting this morning with them, and so, they are hitting the road running, and we will add two as soon as I get a couple more out of training, probably in about four to six weeks, and we'll add them into the mix. In the picture, if you see the picture, that's Zuri Gerbert, you saw her earlier, and Rachel Hall. You also see Rachel, she, she's one of our motorcycle riders, rides our electric bikes. You'll see her on the Swamp Rabbit Trail in downtown. But that's two of the net team members right there. So, some of our other net team members, as you see here, you see we've divided up right now to start with, and like I say, this is a pilot program. We would like to have, grow into net team officers in many more areas than this. But in looking at the, at the data and the calls for service and in speaking with communities, these are the six that we're starting with, these six areas. Now, I will mention, it's not just six neighborhoods, some of these are several neighborhoods in one, if you will, net zone. So, Zuri, like I said, will be Southern Side Hampton Pinney. Officer Chuck Cunningham will be West Greenville and West End. And then, Justin Lewis will be Pleasant Valley and Shimwood. And then, Officer Noel Howard, and he's also the officer pictured here, he's part of our bicycle crowd management team. Noel Howard will be in Nickel Town. So, those are the first four areas we've started with. We will then, on our next round, add in the Earl Street area, Stratham and Viola Park, that's area one. And also, the Green Avenue Logan Park Haney Serene area. So, those will be the two that complete the six, and looking forward to getting this going, and should be a great thing moving forward, and I'll take any questions you have about that.
Do you expect them to attend the Neighborhood Association meetings too, as well as the zone?
That's correct, yes, so they will be, the zone lieutenants usually attend that, and then also, these will be, especially in those neighborhoods, will be attending. And so, the way these officers are divided up, I failed to mention this, they have really a primary and a secondary. So, the way we've got them divided up in areas, if their partner's own person is not there on a day, they will help cover that neighborhood also. So, we're pairing them up so that they have good coverage and the communities will get to know them really well.
And area four would include Greater Sullivan? I miss, I'm speed reading here.
Yes, yeah, it would.
I mean, do you.
Yeah, because that's basically a continuation of Haney Street, that's right, yes, ma'am.
Greenland Spartanburg.
That is one we have on the list that we want to add, and like I said, we've got about 10 more neighborhoods we want to add. Right now, with the officers we have, we're pulling these from, mostly from Uniform Patrol, and so, because they'll be taking some calls in Uniform Patrol and relieving some of those duties. But right now, I wanted to get this program started, so we're starting with these. We do have a list of neighborhoods that we wanna continue with and grow this program.
To what extent will there be coordination between these area officers and the officers who are actually doing the patrols in these neighborhoods?
So, these officers will be patrolling those neighborhoods, these will be embedded in those neighborhoods. This is their assigned, they are actually, so we're divided in the city into five zones. We have the Central Business District, and then four zones, and those zones are large. These neighborhoods are very small, you know, dots, if you will, on the map in those areas. So, what you could have is a zone that has multiple net team officers in it, once we get the program grown.
Okay, and this, this is my, my point. Okay, and this is my point, I guess, if I'm trying to make a point. I think what you're doing is absolutely great, and I think this is absolutely needed. And I agree with Ms. Duckett that this is a huge step forward as far as improving relationships. In order to get that real trust in those neighborhoods, you gotta have a system where all of the B cops have relationships with the people in the neighborhood so that they know who the good guys, who the bad guys, who the people, you know, who they need to be looking out for, who, if something happens, they need to exercise some discretion with as opposed to just locking them up. Now, I suspect that these individual officers will know that for those neighborhoods. But what I'd like to make sure you also do is create some sort of system where you have those judgment calls that need to be made. There's a process by which those officers can contact these officers and say, hey, I'm having a problem. You know, this person, you know, can you give me some background? Is this something that I need to, you know, deal with as far as an arrest is concerned? Is this somebody, you know, who I can exercise some discretion with, something like that? So that, you know, the people believe that they have a partner in the neighborhood as opposed to just somebody who's coming in and looking to arrest them for what have you. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. No, you're exactly right. And that's why they are, we really consider them our, you know, they're the community coordinator. So, the officers are gonna know that, who to go to for that certain area and who to reach out to. And also, they're the coordinator that's gonna bring those officers in with them to these different community meetings or community events and introduce them. You know, maybe they work that zone regularly, and that gets them involved. Because eventually, those officers, the regular beat officers, zone officers, are gonna end up, some of them, on these net teams.
Good deal.
And so, they will have cards to be able to give out to the neighbors as well?
Yes, in fact, I was talking with Communications, talking with Beth Brotherton about that tonight. And so, she's assisting me on that. And we're gonna have, like the old-school baseball cards, if you will. The officers will have them to give out to the kids. We want the public, you want the public to know who you are and who to call. We're working on getting them phones so that they have phones, that they can have direct contact with the community. And so, we're taking care of all that right now.
Are you getting a baseball card?
Am I? No. I don't want to break the camera. We'll leave that to them. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Memorializing or kicking off the Greenville Development Code process. Our Communications Department had some fun with the planners, and it's about a two-minute video. So, let's go ahead and queue it up, and that will be all we have tonight. Coming fall 2021.
Okay, we're gonna have to have discussion about that one? I am just, now, they had, what were the swords and stuff like that? I mean, hey, if we gonna have us a new dream team, you know, they need some swords or something. Well, anyway.
At least we can do this, get changed.
That was very good. I, that was very good. You're giving a pen. Bless their heart. Okay. That was excellent. Now, we're gonna have to end every meeting with a dream team now. My God, that was good. Thank y'all so very much. Any other hearts and minds and issues, and we thank y'all so much for leaving the same day that we came. Good night.